...of February fourth, two thousand and thirteen is called to order. We'll call Ms. Bitten.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington? Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
We did have contact with Councilman Pennington. He is on the way. So... We have one item of business this evening, and that is the fund balance and general fund revenue. And because it is a special meeting, that is the only item that we will discuss tonight. So I'm going to turn... Over to the manager, Kishnik, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The... These meetings have been characterized several ways, I think, over the last couple of weeks. And the more Mr. Darley, Mr. Miller, Nino... I don't think I've ever known his last name, actually.
It's just Nino White Chair.
This is such a moment. Anyway, just pointing out the obvious. But the more we go through these meetings and refine, reform these spreadsheets, look at the numbers, it becomes real clear what the message is and what the goal is during these meetings. And I must say, it's very simple. When we go through these numbers, when we put them together, and as I learn, as we learn where we've been and where you have projected or at least budgeted to go, it's important that you all are reminded of what those numbers are. And because when you deal with them so infrequently, I think it's important to deal with them on a more regular basis. We do it all the time. And of course, for me, because I'm just learning your financials, it's while I do it, I want to share that information. And I guess I just wanted to take one hour for a couple of us to present these findings and have a give and take and entertain questions, keeping in mind that we haven't delved into the detail of the budget process. This is a broad brush overview of where you've been and where you thought you were going and what that means and where the challenges are, where the changes are, where you thought you might be going, you really aren't going exactly there. And I'll get into those specifics more. And not to mention, what are the large drivers? I know you probably know that taxable value, revenue sharing, and people. So if you can sum up local government, it comes to property taxes, revenue sharing, and people. And that translates into levels of service. So in a nutshell, that's what this is all about. On the revenue side, you have to throw in expenditures to see from the fund balance from the perspective of what we have in the bank and why, and how that happened. Because there's been a lot of conversation throughout my career, not just the city of Troy, but anywhere I've ever gone, is what happened to that money? Where... How did you all of a sudden have $6 million of fund balance? Where was that money tucked away somewhere? I'm in the open going to go over as many ways as I know, we know, that that actually happens in municipal budgeting, as well as your household budget, I'm sure. So that introduction, we list... And this may seem a little busy at first, but basically, you have the revenues here with total general fund revenues from '08 to '12. So those are all actuals. And when you look at tax revenues, which is property taxes, you see in '08 you had $36 million, and '12 you had $30 million. That's a problem. The market fell out. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Proposal A has certainly come to impact, at least the commercial for sure, in the city of Troy as well as other places. So when you look at that, when you had service levels based on these numbers at $36 million, you know you have trouble here. When you had $6.6 million in constitutional state share revenue, and you're at 5.8 plus the EVIP, which is the meeting three areas that the governor has set out, and that you meet these three areas, you get the $320,000. So it amounts to about $6.1 million, not a significant decrease from 2008 in state shared revenue. And then sort of what I would call the incidentals, and they may seem like big numbers, but still the incidentals, licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue. We checked this out just a little while ago, and there was $500,000 in that number for what you called an energy efficient wind spires.
EECBG.
EECBG. For the wind spires out in front of City Hall. So when we see numbers like this, we know there's something going on there. And intergovernmental is just that grants. Charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and investment earnings. I ask Tom to put investment earnings on here because it used to be when we were... Everyone was doing local government budgeting, and investment earnings were up at $766,000, and now you're at $83,000. You never really think about the fact that low interest rates aren't always a good thing for your bottom line. They are on, you know, your payment side. But the reality is for your investments, when you're at a municipality and limited and what you can invest in, that's a significant service reduction. That's a problem. Other, we said, Tom, here you thought this was Brownfield redevelopment grant is what you were saying. So we started at 50 in '08. We have $56 million, so we're down to 48, so almost a $10 million reduction. You all have seen these numbers. That's a structural problem. And the question is, what's the big part of that number? And then we'll talk more about how expenditures come together, what you've done, and what we see in these numbers in the expenditure side to address that situation and what we see going forward. But the biggest component, $36 million to $30 million, is property tax revenue. I wanted Nino to briefly talk about taxable values and what they're doing because it's such a significant component of your general fund budget.
Thank you, boss. I get to call him boss. You're welcome. Again, these are all numbers you're familiar with. We've been over these a bunch of times. But what we wanted to do this time was we wanted to break them down so you could take a look and see where you're getting hit the hardest. And you'll also notice that we are getting, as the years progress and you get into your budget sessions, you see that the residential numbers are actually rising, which is a good sign. The residential market is doing very well. The problem that we have, as you see on your commercial industrial side here, 1.38 million, down almost to a million two. The residential number started out over $3 billion, and we're at 2.6. I mean, it's an enormous hit that we're taking. These are taxable value numbers. The rationale for the reason for the concern is because of the cap on taxable value. We intend to raise residential values this year about 4 percent. The CPI is 2.4 percent. We'll be lucky to realize 2 percent, and that's just on the residential class. And what that's going to do is that your commercial and industrial numbers are still going to drop this year. That market is still bad. It's almost flat. We're predicting it'll be flat next year. We'll start seeing some small increases at that point in time. But the 2 percent that you're going to pick up in the residential taxable value will not offset the loss in the commercial industrial class. So this is the big issue for you. And again, this is just to show you exactly where we started out. You had a $5.5 billion role in 2008. We lost almost a billion dollars in tax. I mean, that's huge. That's an enormous number. And the biggest reason for that is because we have so much commercial industrial property. When that market went down, when the auto companies got in trouble and all their suppliers started pulling out of these office buildings, you have all this vacancy that you have to deal with. State law dictates that when they fill those buildings back up, I don't get to put the value back on it. It just goes by the seat of the car. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll certainly answer those.
Would this be a good place to talk about personal? Because I get a lot of questions when I go around the city, what's going to happen now that personal?
First, let me say that, and I'll...
So maybe you could explain where that's going and what the impact would be on the city.
We're not going to show a lot of that in the future budgets. As Tom says, we can't predict something that we don't know yet. The law is still very clear. Initially started out that all personal property other than utility property was going to be off of the roll by 2022. It'll start phasing out in 2016. That law, when it was passed in the lame duck session, just phased out 100 percent of the industrial personal property. There are clauses in the law that dictate 80 percent revenue back to the community. For whatever you lose, they would pay you back 80 percent. A big portion of that that's changed is that it has to be, if you have suffered more than 2.5 percent of your total role. Well, our commercial personal property right now is 3 percent of our total role. If it goes down this year below 2.5 percent, there'll be no revenue reimbursement to the city of Troy for that. So there's a whole bunch of speculation there, and the implementation language hasn't been adopted yet. It's really premature to talk about it. We don't know the financial impact that's going to have on us. And as soon as we do, it'll be reflected in these numbers. We'll be able to tell you what to expect, how much revenue you can get. There's clauses in there where you can acquire some money for public safety. If you've lost money for public safety, for police and fire, the state will reimburse you for a portion of that. The formulas are very complex right now, and they haven't been finalized. We expect that, and everything is contingent on a vote in November to create an authority that will handle the reimbursement monies. If that fails, the whole personal property issue goes back to the legislature to be redone. So I understand that it's a concern of yours. It's certainly a concern of ours as we try to budget, but it's just too gray right now. There's not a lot I can tell you with any certainty at this point in time.
So the numbers that you give us here don't reflect?
They don't address it. And another reason that that's the case is because it really doesn't start affecting us until 2016. So that's going to be in your three-year budget anyhow. That won't be in these next two years.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nino. We'll talk about it a little bit later. But one area that when we get talking internally is charges for services at $7 million. See, it's dropped. But one of the things we... Mark, actually, Miller pointed out was user fees, the actual memberships and all the user fees at the community center are up for all practical purposes. But Mark, what was the number? $200,000? Trending upwards?
Yeah, over $200,000.
Yeah, over $200,000 on annual basis. So these are kind of things that you see that aren't even in the projections, but that are happening out there because a strengthening economy, even in spite of the lag of the taxable value professionals and how property tax law happens. So... And another thing we had talked about was stability equals investment. So the more stable people think your local government is, the municipality is, the more willing they are to invest. We met with some real estate professionals today, and they made that same comment. Troy is really starting to come back because people recognize that it is a stable environment and it is a good place to invest in. And that permeates all throughout. It has a trickle effect throughout all these numbers that you can't measure, but you must pursue and you must take steps to make sure that that stability continues. And I think we're hearing it and we're starting to see it. So this is just a little general fund activity in 2010. I showed you the revenues, 55 million to 48. These are actuals. And then the expenditures are 58, 53, and 45 for an increase in fund balance of 2.4 million, 1.9. And then this year, you remember, was 6.4, if you will. So when you look at the next three years, which were projections... I'm sorry. Tom doesn't like it when I use that word. It's all semantics, right? But for our purposes, it's a budget. It's not a projection. It's based on 100 percent of all expenses, fully loaded, all the personnel costs, 100 percent employment. So if I say projection, it's meant to mean fully loaded budget for those years. And you see the revenues, we've gone from 48 to 45 and flattened out at 45. Expenditures are at 50, 51, 52 for a decrease in use of fund balance, if you will, of 500,000, 1.5 million, and 2.5 million. So you should look at those numbers from a macro viewpoint and say, we have a problem. We were at 55 million. Now we're trending at 45, so we've lost $10 million. We need to do something, whatever we can on the revenue side, if we can. Expenditures, 58 million. We're down to 45,000. The city of Troy, 58 to 45... Did I say 10 million? Sorry. 58 to 45 million. The city of Troy on an actual basis has done some phenomenal things. Processes, programs, changes to basically impacting people. The employees of the city of Troy through the expenditure side by taking furlough days, employee concessions, health insurance, any of these areas, to bring that down to 45,000 is truly remarkable. 45 million is truly remarkable. And then we show the budget forecasted out, if you will, at 50 million, up five, about $5 million, and then basically 51, 52. So pretty flat there as well. So what we should be saying to ourselves is, we know the revenues... We see the revenues at 48 million, and we're at 45 million. Hopefully, we can do a little better than that. State share revenue is one that we know that's under budgeted by $600,000 to $700,000, okay? So we know that's a number. And when we go through the budget process, those numbers are going to be replacing the numbers that are in there for these forecasts, okay? But just know, you've got a $4 million gap. We need to work on this number, and we need to work bringing the expenditures. How could it be closer to 45 million? And I'll tell you that in just a second. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask that. That's a huge jump from 2012 to 2013 in expenditure. From 45 to 50 million, almost $5 million, so you're going to get into that.
I'm going to tell you that right now. It's a good segue. 45 million to 50 million, this is an actual, this is a budget, if you will, forecast. This is based on several positions unfilled. And you can see that in the numbers when you have... You know, we just look at... The chief was talking about how many positions do you have unfilled right now since the beginning of this fiscal year?
Twelve.
Twelve positions. So, you know, when you forecast that out, that's a pretty big number. City manager's office, one. So throughout the city, you know, that's a fairly sizable number just in unfilled positions. And a lot of that was because of the early retirement that you all offered. So it worked because it brought expenditures down, and this number needs to be readjusted. But it is based on 100 percent of employment. We don't budget based on... I guess you could get really dangerous and budget, you know, at 85 percent of expenditure personnel cost. Now, I don't know of anyone who would do that. But, and I'm not being facetious, the reason I say that is because that's basically the difference of these two numbers. And you, while you don't factor in attrition or unfilled positions, you certainly do experience it. So if we budget at 100 percent, we know it's going to be less than that. So at the end of the fiscal year, everyone says, well, why do you have more fund balance than you thought you were going to have? Well, that's one of the main ways that fund balance happens without planning for it.
Mr. Kishnik?
Does that make sense?
Councilwoman McGinnis had a question.
Sorry, yes.
And when you're talking about being... Having all of our positions filled and being 100 percent, quote-unquote, that's really coming up to the levels that we agreed to reduce to. So I think for the community and for the council, it's probably good to make sure we're on the same page that when we say back up to 100 percent, someone may think that that's back up to 100 percent where we were before we started making all these reductions and cuts. But really, for us to be 100 percent filled, that would be making sure every position that we had outlined in the reductions and through ICMA would be filled, which is still a considerable reduction, right?
That is well said. It is based on the level that you severely reduced back to, to realize these kinds of savings.
And I think, Chief, you can correct me. Didn't some of your cuts were accelerated?
Yes, it is. Yeah. I'm sorry. I'll go into that tonight when I show where we had our budget savings, our fund accelerated reductions through the early incentive programs to get people to retire.
So basically, you got down to your cuts earlier than...
Two years earlier.
That was budgeted.
Yes. Some cases, two years. Many cases, one year earlier.
So you...
Yes. And those are to the levels that were determined to be a sustainable level. So when the ICMA came in and did the study, those numbers that are supposedly at 100 percent are what were called sustainable levels, especially for the police department, which took them back to the level of 1979, is my recollection, at a sustainable level. Not necessarily maybe the level that we would like it to be, but at a sustainable level. So I think what you're saying is if you took the 45 million in '12 and you added the sustainable levels, that would be up 3 to 5 million dollars.
Right.
So the only reason that it's at 45 is that the positions are unfilled.
Unfilled positions, right. That's exactly right. But you had... But see, you went from 53 to 45, so, you know, here's another huge reduction, and how did you do that? And you see, you keep peeling back the onion, and you start seeing, well, this is all about unfilled positions, attrition, funding. This is all about all kinds of concessions that you... That the employees were able to provide to come to the table and help everyone share the pain to get through it. And that's what this is right here, 53 to 45, right? So we hope at, in the end, to get this half a million, 1.5 and 2.5 million dollars used of fund balance reduced so that you come closer to even, which is the goal. And I'll ask Tom. Tom can... I wanted Tom to talk about the fund balance. But here's the ending fund balance for 2012, 33 million. And of that unassigned is 23 million. So it's a pretty good number, if you will, in fund balance to carry you through. I'll let Tom talk about that.
Thank you. Yeah, again, you know, as was pointed out, we clearly had a revenue issue, and we addressed it basically by reducing our expenditures. Our expenditures are payroll. 65 percent of our expenditures are payroll related. So as you can see, our revenues dropped from 55 million in 2010 to 48 million. I mean, that's a significant drop, about 7 million or about 15 percent of our revenue sources. Expenditures, we dropped by, you know, at least about 13 million. So again, that rolled down to fund balance. And in '12, we realized, again, a $6 million increase in fund balance. But if we looked at then our unassigned, our unassigned fund balance actually went up by how much? 10 million. Over 10 million, right?
10 million.
Exactly. And so you're asking, well, how does that happen, if you like math? Well, the reason is, is there's other factors that go into unassigned fund balance. In other words, what is unassigned? Unassigned fund balance is, to be able to tell you, is what do you have for resources that you can allocate really to subsequent year budgets, okay? So not only did the 6 million say ride down to increase your fund balance in 2012, but also because you went from a deficit that was originally in 2013 of about 2.5 million to a reduction of only 500,000. That 2.5 million also helps increase what's unassigned. In other words, we didn't budget it for a subsequent year or the changes that we budgeted in subsequent year budgets, okay? So again, you know, as quickly as it comes up, in other words, we're about 51 percent at 2012. As we... It can significantly go down by percentages, too. As we budget a 2.5 million dollar shortfall in 2015, it's going to affect your 2014 unassigned fund balance. So not only did you... This would assume that you spent 1.5 million, but you're also going to use another 2.5 million in the subsequent year, which affects this previous year's number. Does that help explain? So in other words, you can go up very quickly, but you can also come down from a percentage of fund balance very quickly, too. And it's kind of a complicated subject, but the idea is unassigned fund balances is to try and tell you what do you have to appropriate to subsequent year budgets that you haven't already done.
Questions on that? At the end, the third year of the forecast, the budget forecast, the $12 million, remember the city council policy, as I understand, is 15 percent of expenditures in fund balance. Yeah, minimum. So if you just do, use 50 million as your base expenditure, because that's a fairly decent today's number, 50 million, it's, you know, 7.5 million, right? And so if you're going to... If you're down to 12 million, you're still pretty significantly above the threshold of 15 percent.
About 24 percent.
Yeah, 25 percent is what it's closer to. And then as each year you work on bringing these numbers closer, the economy gets better, the values in the assessing office improve as commercial bottoms out and 15, 16 starts to uptick, residential already starting to uptick. As evidenced by you can't find a house to buy, so if you have one, I'm looking. But you can see that's how it goes in through the three years of the forecast. Does that make sense to everyone? Good. So I wanted Nino kinda to talk about this a little bit with me is, I always, every time I go to a new community, I wonder, you know, how much, what does it cost, you know, from a property tax standpoint to live in your community and how does that compare to others? And there's a lot of factors that go into that, right, in terms of what values are in different places. And having just come from a township, I can tell you that you're, with Troy being at ten point four eight right here and all these highlighted are townships in front of you, besides Rochester Hills, it doesn't include refuse and recycling, which would be a little, which would be higher than Troy. Novi, Bloomfield Hills, Lake Angeles are the, the three really, and Orchard Lake Village that are, the four that are ahead of Troy, just in terms of militery. You're really in a competition with townships to have the lowest militery. And from a local government perspective and having come from a township, you, you cannot beat a township in, in a militery race. It's not going to happen. And just providing the base level of services for the city of Troy. So when you, when you look at ten point four eight, from a militery standpoint, you're, you're doing very well. When I click to the next slide, these are all the continuation by, sorted by militery of all the municipalities below, I should say, higher than the city of Troy. So, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to you a couple of things. Brian did mention Rochester Hills without the, the refuse mill. That's very important. Lake Angeles wasn't really a comparable community. There's only like three hundred houses. They ring a lake. They don't have police, they don't have anything. They don't need a parks and rec department because they ring a lake. The houses all theirs. They start like at a million dollars if you want to live on Lake Angeles. So the services they do provide is nominal, but as you can see, the people there pay quite a bit for that service. Novi and Bloomfield Hills are in a unique situation. Now, we used to be slightly below them as far as our militery goes, but because of the high concentration we have of commercial industrial property, once that ratio's about fifty-fifty, commercial industrial to residential, the commercial people are actually paying a ton of your expenses and not using any of those services. We used to be sixty percent commercial industrial, forty percent residential. Now our tax base is the exact opposite. We're sixty percent residential and forty percent commercial industrial. It's a bigger strain on the residential properties. Militery goes up to cover the refuse, which is contractual, covers debt, which you have to pay. That's the reason for the difference in our rates. And as little as two years ago, we were lower than both of those communities, but they're both about sixty, seventy percent residential in their tax base right now. And Novi and Bloomfield Hills in particular have virtually no offices. It's all retail is where they, their revenue is. Lot less calls for service. It's easier on your police and fire departments. So comparatively speaking, you look at the other communities, there's Bloomfield Township, Rochester, Bloomfield Township, Royal, I mean, our militery rate is still phenomenally low for the services that we're delivering.
Even with a declining tax base?
Even with a declining tax base.
Not tax base, tax-
Well, and again, the other, one of the other things I should mention is, I forgot to tell you this before. Talk to the Bloomfield Hills and the Novi assessors, their residential market is increasing just like ours is. If they're raising up four or five percent and it's seventy percent of their role, they're just getting huge numbers there. They're picking up way more taxable value than we are because they don't have that drag on the, on the taxable value that we're experiencing with the commercial industrial properties. There's nothing to offset it. When they pick up two percent, they're picking up two percent on seventy percent of their role. There's nothing dragging it down. Whereas our two percent barely covers what we're losing in the commercial industrial sector.
Questions on that? I know that's kind of an offshoot, but it's, certainly is what makes up the property tax revenue in, in any municipality. So in general, what contributes to fund balance? Because this issue always comes up. Where, where, where does the, the fund balance come from? And I, you know, the, the best example I can give you is when we, when we budget out three years and we, or we even look at next year, a big source of revenue is state share revenue, revenue sharing. And when you look at that six million dollar number, given the economy in the past three years, it's, it's very, very dangerous to set that number too high. Because then you set your expenditures to meet it and then you don't know what the economy's gonna do in Michigan. You don't know what the legislators are gonna do to the formula, even if it's statutory, even constitutional, how much money's going in to, to go through the formula because of the, the economy. So when you set it at five point two million and it comes in at, let's just say, six million, that's eight hundred thousand dollars, that looks like it just happened when in fact it doesn't. You, you, at least from my perspective, anywhere I've ever been, we certainly have always budgeted revenues conservatively and expenditures the same way so that we didn't get into trouble at the end of the year and have a fiscal cliff crisis to deal with. So Tom, I'll let you do the next one.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I think the idea is, well, gee, how can you, how can actual results, whether it be revenue, expenditures, or in ultimately fund balance, be different than what you budgeted for? And, and the idea is, is that, well, changes in estimate, actuals come in different than what you budgeted for on, on a couple of different things. Again, you talked about being conservative on revenues and expenditures. But clearly the, the idea is, what is the definition of contributing to fund balance? And the, by definition is when you have revenues greater than expenditures, that adds to fund balance, just like your savings account at home, right? If you didn't, if a paycheck was more than what you spent for groceries, then that's a good thing. As such, then any increase in revenues or decrease in expenditures can either in, would increase fund balance as a whole. So therefore, then what are some of the things that decrease expenditures? And of course, the big thing that we had in two thousand twelve was unfilled positions. Basically attrition, right? That's, was a big driver in that six million dollar increase to fund balance. In fact, we talked about it a little earlier, that in two thousand twelve, the budgeted full-time positions for Troy was three hundred and forty-eight positions. We actually only had two hundred and ninety-four full-time positions at the end of two thousand twelve. That's significant. And again, I think Councilwoman McGinnis talked about, you know, what, what did we budget? Well, we budgeted, again, three hundred and forty-eight. We're budgeting for two thousand thirteen, only three hundred and nineteen full-time positions, and we don't have those completely filled. So anyway, the idea is that the differences are, yes, we budget that we will be fully staffed. Through attrition, we typically have savings in those areas. And I, it would be an increase in fund balance from what A, either we budgeted or projected into the future. Other things that helped with that six million, again, was wage and benefit concessions, i.e. furlough and wage cuts that our union groups and employees agreed to. Again, when actual costs are less than budgeted, some of the things that help with that is our health insurance increases are less than anticipated. Typically, you know, there is an inflation factor in, in our healthcare premiums that we budget for, whether we actually come in at those increases depends on A, whether the person was with a B C N or a HAP type plan or part of our self-insured plan. The self-insured plan is really based on true claims. Again, we also get some insurance refunds and rebates. We don't, typically don't budget for those type of things because we don't know what they are and they're, they're typically, you're unable to project that because it's based on other factors that, that you really don't know for sure, at least to a level that you want to put them into a budget to expect those. Contracts and bids are, again, renewed as we know, sometimes the bids come in less than what we budgeted. Sometimes they come in more, depending on the level of service that our bids and our contracts are for. And of course, any unexpected sources of revenues can also affect, again, the level of either use or in some cases, an increase in fund balance. The idea is that there's several different outside factors that when you go through the budgeting process, that you can't foresee to actual expenditures or revenues incurred at the end of, of the fiscal year.
Questions on that? It's just important to know that there's all these factors that go in, as many of you know, when you're putting the budget together, there's, there's several unforeseen things. There are projections, increase in health insurance. We don't know. We don't know what the collective bargaining agreements are going to say the next year, if it's expiring now. We have to make several assumptions that, you know, hopefully we're close to right on and, and we make those changes throughout the year as we monitor it. So what are the pressures? We talked about taxable value and the inflation, inflation which is a good thing in, if you're investing and it's a bad thing if you, if you have your, your rate of, if your property's going up at least five percent. Interest rates, again, being low has an impact on our investment income. Talked about personal property taxes. You asked about it, Mayor. I know Nino has put together a projection and just under the scenario of replacing eighty percent, what was the hit to the city of Troy? Do you remember what that number was, Tom? You guys remember what that number was?
For what?
Personal property tax, if, if eighty percent of it's reduced.
The problem is that, that included everything though.
Well, everything, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be everything.
It was less than forty thousand in value, I thought.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
We'll get that number, but, yes.
What, what is just the, how much revenue comes in, how much tax has come in through personal property taxes?
Eight point one-six percent of the tax revenue.
So how many million is that?
I think it's on the first page, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand or something I thought I saw for the projection.
Well, that's, that's all part of the answer.
So thirty million, eight percent of that is what you say.
Right.
Two point four million.
Two point, two point four is the number?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a pretty sizable number when you start putting everything together in terms of losing.
Starts with real money.
Exactly.
Starts just like cash.
State share revenues right now are a good thing. They were, you know, they were an issue for a while, but they, they've become a pretty, pretty solid source, assuming the Michigan economy keeps going along. Unfunded compliance mandates, you know, as the state passes unfunded mandates, which I know they don't do, but as they happen, you know, we have to deal with them. Internal pressures, attracting and retaining quality employees. Right now, we have trouble hiring employees, offer a job to someone who goes to a different municipality because of the, the compensation package over there. Cost of innovation, continuing to do things better and more efficient. Fund subsidies, you know, transferring out, a great example is the, the fire fund and, and making sure that, that we are paying for the fire service that this city is so fortunate to have. Aging infrastructure, you know, when we delay capital projects, and we didn't talk a lot about capital because we have a special night for that, but as we delay capital projects, it only costs more in the future. So you may save the money today, but you certainly don't save it in the long run. And then what if extreme events that are natural or economic that where the bottom just falls out or there's a natural disaster? Not, not a lot of that pressure here in terms of natural disaster, but certainly economic disaster. Looks like based on the numbers from the city of Troy absolutely happened. And the city of Troy dealt with it and continues to deal with it. And that's part of why we're here tonight. Yes, sir.
Could you guys talk at all about the plans on how you are gonna attract people and keep people here at Troy? Internally, have you talked about that?
Obviously, you're saying we'll double the salary, but that's not gonna happen.
Right, right, right. Well, you know, after last Monday night's work session, study session, it certainly is, came out as number one on the list. And so we will set a plan in place on, on how to deal with that and, and involving several groups and individuals and people throughout the city. And we wanted to get a little further along in the budget process before we really, you know, it's one thing to go talk to all these groups and identify in all these areas, but until we really get a better handle on the finances that we're going forward with, which as you can see, change, we wanted to do that first, I guess, is what I'm saying.
On that slide, I'm glad you flipped to it, there, the difference between ending fund balance on the budgeted portion and then the general fund balance on the, the actual portion, there's a ten, ten million dollar drop. What is, what's the difference between those two numbers?
This number here?
Yeah.
And this number here?
Yeah, right.
As Tom said, this is unassigned. And, and the way I talk about unassigned is whatever, you can use that money for whatever's a legitimate municipal purpose with no strings attached. But at the end of the, the fiscal year, you had thirty-three million dollars. Obviously ten million of that was attributed to some project, to a carryover in, in the, in the fu, in that money. And the accountant, such as Tom, came up with this great idea to label all these areas and put it, and he put it in his CAFR, as they have to show. It's-
Well, the big thing is, right, our total fund balance is thirty-three point nine million, right? All of that are some long-term receivables. They're not cash, they're not spendable, right? So you don't want to put that out there, hey, you can appropriate that. You can't appropriate prepaid. Part of that is our budget stabilization fund was, has specific restrictions on it. So I don't, you know, so I want to, I don't want to include that in your unassigned, that you can appropriate that without, you know, without knowing what those restrictions are.
So are you saying that we saw it through about ten million dollars that we didn't expect to, to sell through?
No, no. There's more classifications that these guys have. And they are unassigned, right, non-spendable, unassigned, restricted.
Restricted, yeah.
Unassigned, committed, assigned, and then unassigned. And again, in your CAFR report, it, it lists all that in great detail. So non-spendable, again, are, are long-term receivables, right? You can't spend a re, a long-term receivable. You can't spend your, you can't spend your, what, the, the budget stabilization fund, sorry. We also, we sure, we have tax appeals out there. We don't want you to be, you know, we don't want to take that out of being able to allocate that tax appeal until we get past that budget. So clearly the big one is that, you know, say in that twenty-three million dollars, right, or in that thirty-three million, we gotta take out what you've already appropriated, right? You've appropriated spending five hundred thousand dollars in two thousand thirteen, right? Need to take those out of the unassigned fund balance. At the end of the day, what we're trying to say is the unassigned fund balance is available for appropriations to future year budgets. That's what that's supposed to represent. Okay? So when we do that, we want to take things that are restricted that by their very nature aren't very applicable, at least at that point in time. Can you look at the breakdown in the CAFR where it shows whether it was restricted, encumbered, unassigned? And we only deal with the unassigned. These guys deal with the others so that the money that was appropriate for the appropriate purposes continues out.
So Tom, this is really a good news scenario when we look at it. We're in a very good position. Two thousand twelve, we're, we're much better off on unassigned fund balance than what we anticipated, you know, because of all the factors that you mentioned before. We were conservative in budgeting and I think that's the right, right approach. But I don't think anyone sitting at this table predicted that our unassigned fund balance, or could have predicted our unassigned fund balance at the end of June two thousand twelve would have been twenty-three million dollars. I think we projected much less than that, probably about seven million dollars less than that, if I recall. Is that about right?
I think in our, in our projections, we knew that we'd have a surplus and I think it was around two, two and a half million dollars, certainly not six million. Because again, the big part of that is attrition. And even when we project, I, I mean, I can't tell if they're gonna fill that position today or tomorrow. You know, the idea of being conservative in my projections is that, you know-
Wouldn't have projected two million, we're about six million.
Right. Again, primarily from attrition because I'm not gonna project. I'd rather be on this, where we are. Like you said, it is a good news thing. And again, as we go forward, you can see that, that revenues are gonna be flat, rather, even rather we change those and say they go up a million or two. And so say, you know what, we're gonna change our two thousand and fourteen from forty-five to forty-six. Probably our expenditures will change, probably somewhere in the, in, in the same area, you know, but the idea is that revenues, we believe at this point are gonna be relatively flat and just inflation in itself will, will increase in spec, expenditures as you go forward. So...
I believe state shared revenue is gonna be a lot higher than that number by about seven hundred thousand dollars. And I think the state of Michigan shows that right now.
Yeah.
So I think you need to be aware of some of these things that, that are out there as we go along to, to make changes to these numbers and see how they mold together.
Yep. And we're just at the beginning of that process right now. And we're just at the beginning of that process right now.
Are you talking 700,000, are you talking about the 2012 budget or the 2013?
I'm talking 13.
In 13, you know.
In 13, state.
12's an actual, so that's not going to change.
Yep. So 13, though.
Yes, as you know, when we go through the budget process, we give you, hey, here's what the budget is for 13, this is what we project we're going to come in at 13, which is what we're in the process of doing now. Then here's the budget for 14, 15, and 16. So as Mr. Kistnik has indicated, there's going to be some changes. We believe that state shared revenue is definitely going to come up 600,000 more than we thought. Yay, that's great news, based on the, on the state's trend, as it's been.
Is that indicated in this chart?
No, this is just the budget numbers for 13. Again, I'm not going to give you projected numbers until we're.
It's all, it's all projected.
That's what I was trying to say. That's coming up in the next, you know, that's going to be part of our budget cycle.
I'm anxious to see your presentation. Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood.
Yep. 13 is just as the budget stands today for 13, 14, and 15.
Couple points, if I could, if I could piggyback on Councilman Fleming. My recollection when we were doing that is the same. And when we did that, we weren't sure exactly how many were even going to take the ERIT program. So it's hard to project how many are going to leave early, so we don't budget, and I think more left early than we anticipated, which drove our vacancies up and brought it from 2.5 to 6.
Right.
So that was a good thing. If nobody would have taken the ERIT program, we would be sitting here today with probably zero increase because the 2.5 wouldn't have happened either, Councilman Fleming.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but when we did our assumptions on the budget, we couldn't predict who was going to take it. So we didn't try to predict. We basically said, we don't know, we're not going to predict that. We knew we had a path, we knew some people were going to take it. So we didn't put anything in there in the budget for people taking it, and it was accepted very well.
Very, very little projections, but you're right. I think it was happy and good news.
I remember, I remember a conversation where I said, you can't predict that because we haven't presented it yet, we don't know, we don't want to go out on a limb, but.
The good news is our plan worked.
Exactly.
That's the good news.
Absolutely. And again, what we budgeted based on 319 FTEs going forward, right? We, from 348 FTEs, we budgeted 319.
All you have to do to see that your plan worked without, without even discussing it, is 53 to 45. So obviously, you know, something really worked, and that's significant.
Councilman Paddington, did you have a?
Yeah, is there any carry forward to 2013 in that attrition or is that, is it all done?
Again, yes, the, the, we believe, again, when we do our projections, our expenditures will probably be less than the 50 million because we do have attrition, some significant attrition still out there. Not to the level that we had in 12, but I think, you know, when you, when you hear Chief Mayor's report of, of where he's at with actuals compared to the 319 that we got budgeted, you will see that there is some attrition in there. But again, you know, keep in mind, the budget is a policy document, right? It's how we want to allocate our services from a financial perspective. Rather we, the actuals end up being that or not, is kind of ancillary. It only helps us when we're budgeting the next year, wow, how'd we really do, you know?
I have one more quick question. When you talk about the EVIP, and we're going to get some revenue due to that, that's because we're doing things that are mandated by the state and dashboard, things like that.
Let's let Justin talk about it since he's from, and he gets the deal, and he just submitted the report, just.
Yeah, yeah.
And did a great job.
Yeah, I think that's the good news for, for the public to know is that we're, we're doing things like this.
EVIP actually comes in in three parts. The first part is dashboard and transparency. The second part is the consolidation plan, which I just filled out and submitted on Monday. And then the third part is dealing with healthcare, choosing one of the, one of the three options, 80/20 hard cap or opting out. I probably included around 40 items in our consolidation plan that we've already done and a few items that we're working on going forward, including increasing Clausen's use of our motor pool and getting together with a couple of the communities in the area and discussing how we can further share services.
So all of that that you're doing gets us money?
That, that gets us money from the state. It makes us eligible for money from the state.
Correct. And we were doing a lot of these things even before the state mandated that other cities do that. We were like a leader.
Right. And, and one of the, one of the issues with that is that every year it sets a new standard. So we've submitted all of these items the previous year, and now that's our new standard, and we have to come up with new items for the following year.
So Mayor, all that, all those consolidation plans or projects or organizations that you had before EVIP didn't count towards you, the money. You had to continue progressing forward, which is a difficult task.
And it's happened. Yeah, we were concerned that we were going to get penalized because we were a leader.
Right.
You know, I, I remember having that discussion. That, you know, I think the state could do well to look at Troy to see how you run things first and then decide whether you're going to get, give them money or not because we are typically the leader. And we were concerned we were going to get penalized for that. So I'm glad to see that that, that happened anyways. Any more questions? The next item on this agenda is public comment. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment this evening on this agenda? Seeing none, we are adjourned until 7:30 for the regular meeting in the regular council chamber.